I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today's Tuesday, July 3rd, 2018, and this is a special voting meeting agenda. At this time, Councilman Sishka will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call roll.
Mayor Mangarelli?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Orr?
Here.
Councilman Blair?
Yes.
Councilman Good?
Here.
Councilman Lamerson?
Here.
Councilwoman Scholl?
Here.
Councilman Sishka?
Here.
All are present.
Thank you. Well, thanks for being here on a special meeting right before the 4th of July. Very important business today. I'm excited to say that Robin is still awake, which is good. Thank goodness for caffeine, right? Yeah, you and Jesse have been up, I think, most of the night. So, yeah, let's go ahead and jump in here. Dr. Spada with the presentation.
Thank you. Thank you, members of council and mayor. This is really an exciting time. We are having the opportunity here to really change the course of air service in the Prescott and surrounding areas. This will reach to the boundaries of Yavapai County and beyond. What we're talking about today is the essential air service bids. And we just concluded a meeting with our Airport Advisory Committee in which they reviewed the information I'm about to show you. It was at a higher level of detail, so I will go a bit more quickly here. But the idea is to let you know that some evaluation has occurred for the last 24 hours at a greatly detailed level. So we wanted to share with you the outcome of their analysis and our analysis as well. So just to kind of review what we are doing here, we're responding to what is an essential air service bid that was issued by the Department of Transportation. It came as a result of the fact that we lost service. Great Lakes left on March 26th. Immediately, an order was issued to have folks bid for Prescott. They were given 90 days, and that closed at midnight last night. In the essential air service criteria, which is established through legislation by Congress, there are several factors that are very important, and those will come up through the rest of this presentation, so I wanted to bring those to your attention. Essentially, essential air service is there to guarantee small communities to maintain a minimal level of service. Here's the deal: You can only pick one for subsidy. Now, all the carriers that we're about to hear about could all provide service if they wish to, but only one can provide service with subsidy. We don't make the decision on who gets picked. We simply make a recommendation to the Department of Transportation as to who we think should serve our community. So we look at things like the demonstrated reliability of the carrier in providing scheduled service previously, and any sort of contractual or marketing agreements they have with large carriers. So our passengers have good connectivity. Interline agreements for baggage transfer and passenger convenience. And any sort of plans that they might have locally to help support the sale of tickets or the interest in the carrier, that's also to be included in the bids. What you're here to do today is number five, which is to express the preference of the political leaders representing the airport users. So you can see that when the Department of Transportation makes its decision, it looks at those five criteria to see whether or not, you know, those are met before they make a selection. If we pick a carrier that doesn't meet several of their criteria, they could very well pick someone else. There is one other element you should know about, and it's called EAS subsidy cap compliance. And this is a really important piece. What it means is that there is a maximum of $200 per passenger, per leg, that is authorized. So you take the total subsidy amount, divide by the total passengers, and it gives you the approximate amount of what we call the subsidy cap. If you exceed this subsidy cap, the community can lose its essential air service rights altogether. So it's a really important piece. For our communities, since we're within 210 miles of a medium or large hub airport, we have a maximum cap of 200. There are other communities that are further away from larger, medium hub airports, and they don't have that cap. You can also be in Alaska and Hawaii, and you don't have that cap. But we have that cap. There's some additional local factors that we took into consideration when we were looking at the best provider for our community. It includes comfort and convenience, everything from the TSA experience to the accessibility to the lavatory onboard the aircraft. We looked at the destinations. We completed in a study of all those individuals in our catchment area. It's called a leakage study. And in our leakage study of 2017 tickets sold, there were approximately 1.2 tickets sold within our catchment area. And the number one and number two destinations on that study were Denver and LA in that order. Approximately 100 passengers a day are going there. And so it's an important consideration as to which is the best hub. The final thing that we looked at is the ability to reach 10,000 annual enplanements. Now, this sounds like sort of an arbitrary number, but it's a very important number. Once we hit 10,000 enplanements, and an enplanement is somebody getting on an airplane, then we will be entitled to a million dollars in subsidy a year for this airport. If you're at 9,999 enplanements or less, you get $150,000 a year in entitlements. The other advantage of getting to the 10,000 enplanements is there are certain pots of money that are unlocked, if you will, at greater levels. For example, if you wish to fund a terminal building, if you're under the 10, it's a maximum of $200,000 a year. Getting over the 10 opens it up to many millions being available for funding, for example, a terminal. So here's a snapshot, and this is really exciting. You can see that we had seven different carriers bid. This is what we call the BIOS on the carriers. You can see the annual revenue is listed here for each of the carriers. The ownership is here. And behind you, you can see that there's the EAS cities that they currently serve, how many total cities they currently have EAS service in, as well as the total cities they serve, including EAS. This is the number of aircraft. This is how much EAS experience they've had serving other communities. And this is those that may have had an EAS cap violation in the cities they were serving. In particular, you can see that Boutique Air has three pending cap violations, and Silver Air in its past has had dozens of cap violations. So because the cap is an important issue for us, we do need to take that into consideration. This is a really detailed slide, but we wanted to show the community and you that we took a lot of time and effort to look at the different bids. In some cases, for the example, in the case of Boutique, they had, within their bid document, 10 different options with two different types of airplanes for each option, or up to two. So we had to review quite a few different bids and bid options. So along the left-hand side, you can see the carriers named. This is the number of proposals they submitted. The next column is the aircraft that they submitted with, the number of seats on that aircraft, the hub that they can choose to serve. And to clarify, it is really the carrier's choice of hub, but under the essential air service instruction, it's supposed to be to a medium or large hub facility that you would get service. This is the frequency. And you can see with the breakdown, this is the annual forecast, segments flown, the forecasted completion rate that the airline themselves estimates, the total traffic that we expect, meaning the total passengers. How is that derived? It's the total seats times the load factor. That gives us the total forecasted traffic. Now, I had said earlier that we're shooting for 10,000 enplanements. And to clarify, the total forecasted amount that you see right here is enplanements and deplanements. So what you're really looking for is to divide that in half, and if that's 10,000, or you can just look for any that's over 20,000, those would help us meet the 10,000 mark. The other column that's really important is this one. This is the amount of subsidy per the O and D, per the passenger. Anyone that's in red is essentially a red flag, because what that means is the carrier themselves, when they bid, are expecting to not meet cap. So that is a concern to us, because if you don't meet cap, you have to ask for a waiver, and it may not be granted. You can see that there are several carriers that did meet cap, and those are listed where it's not highlighted in red. Here we have the load factor. And the reason there are some items that are highlighted in red here is because the load factor that was projected by the carrier, because these are all reports by the carrier, seem a little high. It's usually considered unreasonable to project a load factor in excess of 70%. When you do that, what happens is if they don't meet that load factor, in this case, like a 78%, then this amount will go up. So that is something that we were paying attention to as we were putting together the spreadsheet. Now, you notice here, this is twin-engine, and this is single-engine. Everything below this line are bidders that are bidding with single-engine aircraft. The council has, and the mayor has historically indicated, that they do not wish to go to single-engine service. To clarify, you do not have to go to single-engine service unless the community chooses to. Legislatively, you are permitted to have twin-engine service. Unless you relinquish it, it is yours to keep. Once you relinquish it, then in the future, it's very difficult to go back from single-engine service. And almost all single-engine bids are cheaper, so when it gets down to price and you've given away the opportunity to keep twin-engine service, then you do run into a bit of a problem. Over here, there was a column that was addressing TSA. Some of the carriers went all the way through and had security screening. Others had a mix of some screening and some non-screening going onto their planes. This is talking about the global distribution system. If it's limited, which is the lowest level, integrated, which is an enhanced level of ticket buying online, and then if it's fully networked, that means you can go onto the website and buy tickets today for every flight that they fly, including those coming out of Prescott in a code-share situation. On pricing, you can see this column talks about local pricing versus what is called united pricing in this case, which means when you go to buy a ticket under local pricing, it will show up as the ticket from here to LA plus the cost of the ticket from LA to your connecting location as two different prices. When you have fully-integrated, what's called uniting or network, basically, you will get one ticket price for the entire trip, as long as it's with a code-share partner. Over here is whether or not there is truly a code-share. Can you buy one ticket for the entire trip? And this is whether or not there's interline relationships. So these are all what we took into account when we were making recommendations. So one by one, I'd like to briefly go over the different bidders, not in the same level of detail as earlier, but I'm going to point out those items that we were concerned about and those things we were impressed with. Advanced Air, many of you have probably heard about them. They've done a lot of marketing outreach, which is extraordinary. I think they did a great visit with the community, and the community responded really positively. They have kind of a cool model. It's sort of a replacing-the-ground-transportation-shuttle model and also giving you that corporate feel. It is with smaller nine-seat aircraft. They also offered more daily frequency than several of the other bidders, so that was seen as an advantage. In red on every one of the next seven slides, you will see if it does not meet the basic EAS criteria, you can see that they have limited or no current scheduled service offerings, they have not engaged in EAS before, they don't have marketing agreements with larger carriers, and they don't have code-share or interline agreements. It simply means that you, if you go to connect, are going to have to buy separate tickets and check your bag and transfer your bag on your own, which is a really big burden to the local residents. We noticed that in their passenger forecast, they are projecting that they will not meet cap. So that did concern us. If the carrier themselves don't feel that they're going to meet cap, why would we want to support a carrier that cannot meet that requirement for the subsidy cap? There is kind of an interesting piece, and this applies to both Advanced Air and to Boutique. In the nine-seat configuration of the King Air, which both of those bidders included in their bids, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight seats. The ninth seat is the lavatory. So if that ninth seat is scheduled to be full, you do lose lavatory or bathroom access on the flight, which is a concern. Perhaps not so much down to Phoenix, but certainly as you're going over toward Hawthorne, which is near LA, which is a concern to us. So you can see that these are some of the issues. We looked at accessibility, and this particular carry uses what's called a spider lift to get people onboard. And there are other options like ramps that we feel are more convenient. One significant issue with them is that they did not indicate a start date, except at the end of each of their options, where they said schedules will be finalized with community input before the first flight in January. So that was a little concern to us, because we thought the service would start sooner.
Quick question.
Yeah?
When the humidity is high at summertime at our altitude, how many seats do we lose?
It really depends on the temperature. And so carriers range. When it was Great Lakes Airlines, sometimes they lost as much as half their airplane.
So you talk about separating families. This is a good way to do it.
That is a concern. And if the lavatory is in use, you can have nine seats. So, you know, if you have two big families, it's possible you won't get them both on the same aircraft.
Definitely not my family.
Definitely not in the laboratory either.
So the next bidder was ADI Aerodynamics. They're actually going to be operating as Cal Pacific. Interestingly, they actually now operate as Great Lakes Jet Express. They are part of the former Great Lakes family, and they're the only two remaining routes that Great Lakes still offers. That was not very impressive to staff. With our experience with Great Lakes, that was a concern. They did say accessibility was going to be with a ramp. They didn't meet several of the EAS criteria, however, under weaknesses. And this was a big deal-breaker for us. If you bid the DIA option or selected the DIA option, it was called a contingent bid, which basically means that DOT would have to select both Prescott and Alamosa in order for them to agree to serve both communities. And if that didn't occur, neither would get service. So they wanted to do sort of a stopover and incorporate both of those cities in one system, so that was a concern. The next carrier is Boutique Air, very well-known in Arizona. They have code-share potential with United. The reason I say code-share potential, they indicated they cannot use the United brand until they actually got selected, and then they can approach United, and United can then grant them rights. But it isn't something that's given in advance for Boutique. They did have one advantage over all the other bidders, in that they claimed that they were going to establish a maintenance base at Prescott so they could do maintenance on their aircraft. There were several concerns we had as weaknesses, one being that they wanted to bid the PC-12 single-engine aircraft. Another has to do with the lack of co-location with the code-share partner, meaning that they would be in a different terminal, and in some cases, you'd literally have to leave screening. We did notice that they're not EAS subsidy cap compliant at three of their current EAS airports, and I have a slide to address that on the next. Everything in green here are airports that are within 210 miles of a medium or large hub airport. Over here is the subsidy level at each of those airports that would be in the same classification as Prescott. This one exceeds subsidy cap. This one is at the high end. This one exceeds subsidy cap. This one's right at the edge, but is below. This one is below. And this one well exceeds subsidy cap. Interestingly, Vernell recently decided that this wasn't working for them, and they have replaced Boutique with SkyWest Airlines. The average subsidy cap for Boutique is $264, which is clearly $64 over where we would like to be. The next bidder was Key Lime, doing business as Denver Air Connection, single hub service to Denver using Dornier 328 30-seat RJ's. Just as a point, everything over 19 seats has a flight attendant that's bidding. They actually have very successful public charter experience, but that's not the same as scheduled air carrier. You have to sign a form that says you're going on a public charter. It doesn't have the same contract of carriage for the passengers. But they have exceeded 10,000 enplanements at three airports, and that's their historical success. Unfortunately, as shown in red down here, they do not meet multiple EAS criteria, because they don't have experience in EAS. They don't have any current marketing or code-share or interline agreements with larger carriers, so it would make connections difficult. Moca Layli bid with only single-engine service, and they also do not meet three of the EAS criteria in the fact they were the only airline that said that they would not offer any marketing dollars whatsoever to our community. They would only do some in-house marketing. So that was the totality. The rest of the carriers did offer between $20,000 and $60,000 for marketing support, but Moca Layli provided none. Also, they only have one airport that's got a $200 cap, and they are not compliant at that airport. And yeah, it's pressurized, single-engine, and it is noisy inside, and so it's not optimal for a customer experience. Silver Airways was an interesting bidder. They are proposing a new 46-seat ATR 42 aircraft, again with a flight attendant. They had a dual-hub model, daily service to LA, and they were proposing a Las Vegas flight on Thursday night that would return on Sunday afternoon. So kind of interesting. Code-share potential, again, they would have to clear it with United and JetBlue, but they've had United and JetBlue relationships in the past. Here's one of the problems. They have tons of EAS experience, coupled with this weakness. In all those communities, except one, they are now gone. The communities replace them with someone else because of concerns with reputation and reliability. Plus, of course, it doesn't really speak Prescott when you see a flamingo. Okay? And staff is saying, "What is this, a Target?" I mean, we, no, anyway. But they're beautiful airplanes. One of the concerns about this aircraft is even, it is brand-spanking-new, so new that it hasn't been fully approved by the FAA for use in the United States. It's in stage three of four stages of approval, so we're really looking forward to, of course, their opportunity to move into stage four, but we're a little bit concerned. They are trying to bid four years with Prescott. The typical amount is two years. And they did include a 90-day opt-out. We were super impressed that they're reinventing themselves, and they want to fix the reputation issues. Obviously, staff is concerned that we would really have liked them to fix it with someone else, so we know that they're ready to move in and be the carrier we need. The last bidder is SkyWest Airlines. They're proposing double-hub service to DIA and LAX. And these are the strengths, and this is the weakness. The strengths are very strong. They already have pre-approved United Airlines code-share and co-branding, and in fact, have suggested some marketing materials where it will be branded totally as United Airlines. The aircraft will come in in United colors. You will have a single-ticket experience. They use 50-seat RJ's, which is a really nice regional jet. It's a dual-hub model, which we love, out of DIA. There's 450 flights that you would connect with in the United family. At LAX, another 200 flights. We conducted a marketing leakage study, as I mentioned earlier, and we looked at how many folks could reach their destination in one stop from Prescott through Denver to their location, from Prescott to LA to the location. 91% of the tickets sold in 2017 could go through these two locations in one hop to get to where you need to go. This is a real advantage. SkyWest Airlines is co-located in the very same terminal as the United Airlines partners. So you're right across the concourse from the entire United family. You don't have to come in from another concourse. Every one of the 33 cities currently being served by SkyWest Airlines meets cap. The average cap for all of those locations is $67 a passenger. Accessibility, they have a special ADA ramp that goes up to the airplane, so you don't have the spider lift or the crew-assist experience. And they recently signed a multi-year partnership agreement with Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University, which we think is an amazing testament to the support that we need to see with the local community. Weakness, there are fewer daily flights than with some of the nine-seat bids. This would be the route structure. You can see all the places you can go in one stop through LA or Denver. And by the way, right here is Prescott, and we would be feeding into that system or that system with daily service to both. Kind of looks like Prescott over here, doesn't it? So we think the SkyWest advantages are many, and it's a very strong bid that they've put in. Now, a lot of people ask about turboprops versus jets. Do jets really matter? This slide was provided to us by SkyWest Airlines. It's several communities listed up here. And down here in gold or orange, you can see this is what the community experienced in terms of passenger counts when it had turboprops. And in blue next to it, the column is what happened when SkyWest entered with jet service. It's extraordinary. Jets matter. So just a reminder, we're looking at those five criteria. Also, number five is the preferences of the political leader. In the prior session, the unanimous decision of the Airport Advisory Committee was in support of SkyWest Airlines, for all the reasons that have been discussed. And so I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Spada. Great presentation. Questions or comments from the council? Councilman Good.
Robin, isn't it true that if the airlines exceed their cap, they can lose their subsidy from the Department of Transportation? And if EAS status is lost by an airport, it can be permanently lost?
That is correct. That is correct. And our understanding is that Congress is only getting more stringent on making that cap for those airports within 210 miles of a medium or large hub airport. So we must be mindful of that.
Yeah, I think I've seen some reports from DOT that they're really reducing the number of EAS-eligible airports.
Yes.
So risking a potential loss of EAS status could permanently reduce our ability in Prescott to have legitimate carrier air service.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Councilman Blair?
Well, thank you for all the hard work you've done, first of all. Second of all, I've sat here for a lot of years and have been promised a lot of things by a lot of air carriers. And it happened to do with a lot of flights to Phoenix and a lot of flights to San Diego or California or Orange County. And the list goes on and on and on. Ultimately, they're promising the world and cutting the world back to a slice of pie. I'd rather see somebody that has a track record that has a small start footprint, and when this community understands that they're reliable, that they can get in and out of here, that the fair market will increase the number of trips that they will make based upon the enplanements that they have. So I'm looking forward to somebody coming in here, starting small and being grandioso, opposed to somebody coming in here thinking they're going to be grandioso and then cutting our service out from underneath our legs. So I support this one right here.
Okay.
Councilman Lamerson?
Thank you, Mayor. Robin, if I heard you correctly, the overture was that this is whom Embry-Riddle works with?
That is one of the carriers that they've established an agreement with. That is correct.
And you know, Embry-Riddle is a huge deal, not only for the city of Prescott in the state of Arizona, but for the United States with regards to the curriculums and the amount of pilots that are being trained and why they're being trained, and the opportunities to expand the curriculums at the airport for suitable new technology, let me put it that way. So I agree with Councilman Blair. You know, I like going to the party with the people that brought me. So that's where I'm at.
Thank you, Councilman. You know, on the heels of that comment, if I could ask Dr. Ayers, would you be able to talk to us just for a minute in that regard to the partnership and your thoughts in that regard? Thank you so much for being here.
Sure. Be very glad to. Mayor, council, a couple items I brought up at the last meeting as well. This is fairly important to us. The partnership agreement we've signed with SkyWest is a partnership to bring our expertise in, obviously, pilots, but also business and engineering and other degree fields that they need to work in partnership to place our young people in those fields. Just being named the number-one university in the state of Arizona and then the state of Florida for job placement, and also number-one on return on investment, our young people are highly sought after. This is the industry they're sought after by. So SkyWest was a, we signed that agreement last Thursday in town here in Prescott, and so we're very pleased with that. A couple of things I would just add to the discussion. I ran some numbers earlier today, our business office did. We did over 1,000 enplanements and about a half-million dollars in university business travel last year, almost none of it out of this airport. If our faculty and staff can get a ticket on a major, buy a single ticket on a major carrier, go through security once, check a bag to destination, there's about 9,000 left to get to 10,000. I mean, I think we can make that work. And I'd also ask, could you run that slide back to show the diagram of where they fly to? There we go. For reference, in that numbers I just gave you, I didn't reference a single parent or student. The top five recruiting states for Embry-Riddle are California, Arizona, in this order, Arizona, Washington, Colorado, and Texas. If you take a look at that map, now, we have students from all 50 states, and they're just about just about all represented. But if you look at that map, that's a very favorable map. The fact that people find our university and come here with the transportation difficulties they have to put up with to get here, that's a very nice map. I'd like to put Embry-Riddle's name on that map, too. So did that answer your question?
Yeah, that's great. Thank you so much, Dr. Ayers.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Mayor Potem?
Yes, thank you. Robin, Jesse, thank you very hard work. You've worked on this for a long time. Appreciate it. I'd also like to thank all of the airlines that did bid. I think that was really impressive to see that we have seven different airlines that are interested in being in our city. And like you said, Robin, when you started, we welcomed them back, but we can only choose Dr. Ayers, I think you really said it all with regard to the relationship and the agreements with Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University. The twin-engine, 91% location to, you know, if you want to go to one of those places, they can meet 91% of it. And the idea of checking a bag once and then moving on. So I really appreciate that SkyWest has showed interest in our city and that we've been able to see that this would be a wonderful match. The idea also, Dr. Ayers, of your working with pilots and other aviation careers and working with United, I think that's major for our community, so thank you for that. And I'd like to thank the Advisory Committee, Airport Advisory Committee. Lot of hard work. Thank you.
Councilman Sishka.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, there's a guy on the radio who says good enough just isn't.
Who is that?
And I have no idea who he is, but that says a lot. We can't mess this up. We got to get it right this time. The community has a lot of problems with, has had a lot of problems with air service. And we've started and stopped and started and stopped and started and stopped for years. We got to get it right. We can't go with people who might give us good service over the long term. We have to go with an established success story. And so I think that ultimately, SkyWest is that success story. And I think that jets breed jets, to be honest with you. I think that we've got Legend Air up there, who we also want to see successful, an FBO that is run by the chairman of our Airport Advisory Committee. And I have to say that this could be a win-win for him because jets are going to bring jets, and it could be a huge win for the community.
Thank you. Councilman Good.
Yeah, as you know, I was able to get my House Bill 2005 through the state legislature, which addressed the growing critical shortage of trained first officers in the aviation industry. Currently, the anticipated or the projected shortfall of pilots is about 10,000 throughout the country. This is going to grow to 30,000 within the next couple of years. And as we all know, Great Lakes Airlines referenced the inability to have reliable air crews as one of the reasons why they canceled service. So having Embry-Riddle contracting with SkyWest, operating as United Express, solidifies that pilot reliability. When I was still professionally managing medical devices the last 10 years of my career, I was legitimately a high-level business commuter. I had platinum status with Southwest, and I flew over 100,000 miles a year. For me, knowing that I had reliable service, that flights would take off and arrive on time, that I could make my connections with the hubs, was the difference between major success or really risking failure within some of our contracting and other services. So having a business community that can rely on this type of service, I think, is critical for us to continue to be able to grow economic development within Prescott and the Quad Cities. Having a 50-seat jet that you can rely on to meet your needs is so important for business, and particularly our families when they want to go on vacation. Can you imagine being on an eight-seater or a nine-seater during the summer and, I'm sorry, two of your kids can't go? You know, that just doesn't work. So capacity is important, and knowing that SkyWest is committed to our community, they're committed a lot of dollars to upgrading their facilities, our facilities. Marketing is going to fill up those jets and get us to this 10,000 employment much faster so that the million-dollar annual subsidies that we could receive can be invested in improving our facilities and really making us a true legitimate regional air service. So I think there's no question that SkyWest is the best choice.
Thank you. Councilman Scholl.
Robin, if we were to go ahead and recommend SkyWest to the DOT, and they selected SkyWest, when would we have flights out of Prescott?
Well, of course, the DOT doesn't have an absolute fixed timeline of when they'll respond back. They've asked for all responses to come back by the 16th of July, presuming that we do get feedback that week or the next week. The anticipated start date for this particular carrier was the end of August.
Councilman Lamerson.
Thank you. Robin, in concert with my fellow council, want to thank you and the committee, et cetera. I mean, it's been, you know, our relationship, I like to call it a marriage, with Embry-Riddle started a long time ago. This isn't new. And you know, it's, there's a lot of things that are coming into fruition through a lot of work. I mean, along with the amount of money that the federal government has invested in our airport, it's not just to benefit Embry-Riddle. It benefits this whole community, our National Forest Service. I mean, the runways, the capability of the runway to address the airplanes that we're talking about coming in, because they're not just going to be passenger airplanes. These are going to be slurry bombers. They're going to be things that can help not only the forest right here, but the entire country, the border, the whole nine yards. So thank you very much, and thank you for being on board with the city.
Thank you. Thank you. This is a unique moment for us to turn dreams into reality, so thank you for your support on that. Thank you.
Very good. Before we go to public comment, I was going to see if the chairman of the Airport Advisory Committee, Tom Giuliani, would you have a few comments for us before we go to public comment? I want to thank you and your team for all your work. I know it's been stated here, but it can't be overstated, all the work that you guys have done, so appreciate it.
Well, thank you for the kind words, and really, it is the work of the whole committee together, and early is on Stiches because he's been a great contributor. We went through this fantastic analysis today in detail that Robin and her team put together, and they really, you know, burned the candle at both ends on that. And I think we did a fantastic job of dissecting and analyzing and questioning, and in the end, we had a consensus opinion unanimous that SkyWest was offering by far the great solution that we've been waiting for for a long time and that can serve us for a long time into the future. So we see no faults with it, and we believe that they will probably realize the market opportunities going forwards and make the investments to even increase service. So we're all very excited.
Yeah. Thank you, Tom. Appreciate it. So with public comment, there are cards back there on the table that you can fill out if you'd like to speak. It is a three-minute time limit, and we'll go ahead and start with that. Maureen, you have?
The first one is Andy Jacobs.
Hello, Mayor and Council. My name is Andy Jacobs. I live at 3502 North 85th Street in Scottsdale. I am with Policy Development Group here on behalf of Levi Stockton of Advanced Airlines today. And while it sounds like you guys have an opinion on a certain direction you want to go, I did want to raise a couple of thoughts with you. First of all, unfortunately, Levi couldn't be here because he's out flying today, but fortunately, I could be here. Being from Phoenix, it's 108 down there today, so I appreciate the opportunity to be here today. He wanted to make sure that Advanced Air's bid was clear with you. It sounds like the Airport Advisory Group and Ms. Sabata did a very good job analyzing all of the bids. And Levi also wanted to thank you for the opportunity to bid on this contract and for the opportunity to visit with your community. Over the last couple of months, we've been here five or six times, and Levi and his team wanted to pass on that, something I'm well aware of, being from Phoenix, but they hadn't spent a lot of time in Prescott until this year, and they were really, really blown away with your community, and particularly the people here. They met a lot of really good people, so they wanted to pass that along. Looking at the bids, we wanted to highlight a couple of things that we thought were strong about our bid. One is that we were the only company that provided market survey in the bid, and we believe that the two most popular cities with the people we talked to, and it bared out in our survey, was Phoenix and Los Angeles. And we are offering multiple flights per day to both of those cities, so we think that's one strength of our bid. Another is that we have, like I said, multiple options per day to both cities, where some of the other bids had maybe just one flight a day to one or both, or maybe just one city with a couple of flights. So we think that that set us apart. And then when you look at some of the other bids, some of the times that some of these flights were, could get you stuck in another city. So we think our bid with more opportunities gives you some flexibility if you're moving on to another connection. We're also delivering more options at the lowest federal subsidy, which I think is important to taxpayers and the DOT. And then I wanted to clarify a couple of things in Ms. Sabata's presentation. On the subsidy cap, it looked like we were over the 200, so I texted Levi to see what his thoughts were on that. He said that when he talked to the Department of Transportation, they urged him not to inflate his numbers, and so he went very, very conservative. He has no concerns about being able to hit that cap. With regard to the code-share and interline agreements, it's something that, obviously, without an EAS contract yet, we don't have those. But we're also actually bidding on another EAS in Silver City, New Mexico. And so that process and the Prescott process has allowed us to have a lot of conversations with not only the DOT and with you all, but also other airlines. And so I think we feel pretty confident that whether we're awarded Prescott or Silver City or another EAS down the road, that we'll be able to get those in place. And then with regard to the start date, apologies for not making it more clear. We could start tomorrow, so that wouldn't be an issue from our end. Again, thank you for the opportunity. We've really enjoyed working on this with you all.
Thank you. Thanks for submitting. Appreciate it.
The next one is Jared Adams.
Hi, my name is Jared Adams, and I'm just a regular civilian of Prescott. And I was just wanting to share a point where, you know, the main purpose for having an airport in Prescott to begin with was accessibility and comfort, you know, because we could go over to Phoenix and we could drive there, but that involves going through traffic, that involves using gas, and then going through the complicated directions to get into Sky Harbor, and, you know, all of these different effects. But having an airport here and the comfort of being able to just drive into Prescott and go is the most wonderful thing in the world, especially for those as they start to get older and they want to retire. They don't want to go through all of the hassle of doing that. And so just with that, I'd like to drive home the idea of SkyWest, because SkyWest in total, you know, it has connections to pretty much everywhere in the United States and outwards. And so the process is to just go to Prescott, to buy a ticket and whatever ticket it needed to get to the next place and the next, and you have the comfort and security of knowing that that flight is going to take off on a nice jet, being taken care of, and being able to take you to your destination without any extra hassle. And that's the main point I want to drive home.
Thank you.
Jonathan? I'm not going to pronounce your last name.
That's all right. Most don't. My name is Jonathan McComick. I worked for every airline that's flown in the Prescott in the past 10 years, and from my experience, I've noticed that airlines that have flown in here under another carrier's name, such as United, US Airways, or America West, or Alaska even when Horizon was here, have always done better. Marketing, not marketing as an individual, as with Great Lakes, they market as their own airline. People don't know who that is. People know who United is, and that's what they're going to look at. Another thing that was brought out in the Airport Advisory Meeting I wanted to elaborate on was that, the example of St. George, Utah. They used to have only two flights a day on SkyWest to Salt Lake City, and now that they're to the point where they have service to Denver, Salt Lake City, Los Angeles, and Phoenix multiple times a day, all on jets. And I feel like that's really the potential of that SkyWest being to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have any others.
No one else? Okay. So at this point, I'm assuming we're entertaining the motion?
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion that we choose SkyWest as our EAS provider.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. Well, again, it's already been stated, but thank you so much, Jesse and Robin, for all your work. I know you've been up for a while, so maybe you can go take a nap now, but really appreciate all that you've done to get us to this point, so congratulations. With that, I randomly selected a quote for today from Orville Wright. "With all the knowledge and skill acquired in thousands of flights in the last 10 years, I would hardly think today of making my first flight on a strange machine in a 27-mile wind, even if I knew that that machine had already been flown and was safe." This meeting is adjourned.
Is he the guy who said, "Good enough just isn't"?
That's right.